Call to order a meeting for the Normal Local Liquor Commission. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuz?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Byers?
Here.
Mr. Roberg?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
First order of business on this meeting is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval?
Second.
Corrections or additions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have one liquor license application to consider tonight that is for Sippin Shop LLC doing businesses Sippin Shop at one-one-five Susan Drive.
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on that? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That license is approved. We have a number of complaints and citations on the Liquor Commission tonight, and I'll go over those. Basically, what this is, is something that we do and the state police does periodically to check a liquor license holder to see if they're validating, checking IDs for people under twenty-one. And these fines are a result of the violations of that. So the first is JD HQ Hotels doing businesses of Wilmington Normal Marriott. This is their second offense, and they were levied a fine of five hundred dollars, and that fine has been paid. The next one is Highland Management Group doing businesses Diamonds at six sixteen West Rab Road. A first offense for them, a fine of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which has been paid. Cardinal Restaurant Group doing businesses Debbie's at sixteen-oh-eight Northbrook Drive, a first offense. Also, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine, which has been paid. Prado Baum Hotel Groups doing businesses at Clarion Point at Six Traders Circle, also a first offense, a fine of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which has been paid. Heaters Development Company LLC doing business as Heaters Hot Chicken at one-hundred South Fell. This is the second offense for this establishment, a fine of five hundred dollars, which has been paid. And the last one is Hacienda Leon Two doing businesses Hacienda Leon. This is the third offense for this establishment, a fine of one-thousand dollars, which has been paid. Are there any questions or comments on any of those? Motion for adjournment, please.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The Liquor Commission meeting is adjourned. We have a presentation tonight. The town has been awarded a Bird City designation for what we've done to encourage bird populations within our community, and I think we have someone here to present that award. I'll just come down here and... She's observing birds in the deck. In her defense, we are three minutes early.
I don't think. Hello? Maybe I have to be on top. There I have to just...
This is heavy.
That's the video.
I know. It can hold it. Sure, yes, I can do that.
There's actually two, Sophie, you want to spread the well?
Well, welcome, everyone. Can y'all hear me okay? Excellent. Okay. Well, welcome, everyone. Before the council meeting gets started, we're really excited to have Jennifer Carota from the Audubon Council of Illinois here to present us with our Bird City Illinois designation, something we're really excited to receive. This is based on the hard work of many departments at the town and support from the council over many years to protect the environment and to, in the process, protect birds and promote better places for birds to stay when they're here in town. So I'll turn it over to you.
I'm sorry, I just got out of my car. I drove two hours to get here. So I thought I'd have a little bit more breathing time, but here we go. So the Audubon Council of Illinois worked on developing the Bird City program in an effort to recognize municipalities for all the great work they do. And because birding is such an economical driver in some communities, that if you're supporting good habitat, it's bringing birders to your community. So we want to be able to recognize municipalities for all the great work they do to protect birds and to conserve birds. And just to highlight a couple of things from your application, the recent, I don't know how recent it is, but you had a seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant to build bird-friendly habitat adjacent to the Constitution Trail. You use eighteen percent of the community's energy from renewable resources, and consecutive years designation as a bicycle-friendly community, and the Silver Lead Certificate for the Children's Discovery Museum. All of those really contribute to great environmental protection for birds in our community, and just want to commend you on that. And I'm proud to be here to award the certificate and the signage for your community. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So a part of the program is in partnership with American Bird Conservancy. So if you look up Bird City Network, you'll find an entire community of Bird City programs across the world, actually. And within that, you'll find Illinois, and we'll get your page uploaded and ready to go for all your great press releases, I'm sure you're going to do. And we'll do some posting on social media to recognize you as well.
Great, and thank you for this. This is kind of timely because we're updating, doing a session on the update of our sustainability plan, and a lot of these people in the audience actually did the heavy lifting and the work on that. And this is part of the effort of what we're doing on that. So, next, Squirrel City, USA. Thank you. Call to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, October sixth, twenty-twenty-five. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuz?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Byers?
Here.
Mr. Roberg?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. We don't have public comment dealing with items on the agenda, but we do have two commenters at the end of the meeting. So we'll move to omnibus agenda items that would be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to pull item E, as in Edward.
Question for...
Move approval? Second.
Thank you. Items considered under omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and a report to receive and file town abnormal expenditures for payment as of October first, twenty-twenty-five. A resolution ratifying the execution of a facility use agreement with Jefferson Partners LP doing businesses Jefferson Lines for use of Uptown Station as a transportation provider. This is a regional bus company. A resolution authorizing the city manager to solicit bids through the town's energy consultant, Stone River Group LLC, for electricity and natural gas for town-owned accounts, and execute an energy service agreement with the lowest responsible bidders. A resolution authorizing a four-year well rehabilitation, repair, and drilling services agreement with Kahoye Well and Pump Services. A resolution to accept water treatment plant chemical bids from November twenty-twenty-five through October twenty-twenty-six. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item E is a resolution to waive the formal bidding process and approve a contract with Stryker Corporation for ambulance cot and lift maintenance. Ms. Smith?
Move for approval?
Second.
Yes, I pulled this particular item from the omnibus agenda because I wanted to highlight two of the things that this action is accomplishing. For one, the fire department has moved to these mechanized ambulance and cot lifts, which is saving strain on fire personnel and medical personnel, which back injuries are a huge cause of workers' comp claims. So that is to be commended, but we're also making heavier use of this particular equipment and finding it quite a strain on the budget. And Ms. Reese, would you please provide some background on the kind of cost we were running into before we opted to move to this maintenance agreement?
Sure, I can very briefly talk about mainly in terms of maintenance just this fiscal year. As the report indicates, we have five ambulances in our fleet. We're asking council to approve a five-year contract, which would have an annual cost of twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per year for ongoing maintenance of the cots and the lifts. And just this year, as I understand it, we've had two repairs done, and those two repairs cost nineteen-thousand dollars. So when you're trying to repair multiple cots, it does add up quickly. So we truly believe that an ongoing maintenance contract is the best way to go.
And the maintenance agreement is going to cover some of the, all of the equipment that we already have in use. It's not penalizing us for not getting it with new equipment, correct?
Correct. When we purchase the equipment, it comes with one-year warranty and it's covered. This is for ongoing maintenance after that first year.
That's all I had.
We're on this item. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That concludes our omnibus agenda. We have one item of general orders tonight, which is a resolution authorizing the renewal of the Employee Group Health Dental Life AD&amp;D and Medicare Advantage Insurance Program.
Move approval? Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, each year, about this time of year, we come to council and seek council's authorization of our employee group insurance program. I'm simply going to indicate and just remind everyone that we are self-funded, and I think we have a good story to tell in terms of our health fund. You might recall at our last meeting when Mr. Hune presented his financial trends report that the health fund is doing, is in strong financial position right now. So with that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Keir and see if she has any comments that she would like to share. And I do also want to indicate that representatives from the Horton Group, Mr. Wojcik, and Ms. Ismael are here and happy to answer any questions. Ms. Keir?
Sure. So, thank you, City Manager Reese. Just very briefly, I want to call out a couple of parties that I think are really central to the fact that our health insurance fund is operating in a really strong financial position. First, we really, really appreciate the assistance from our partners with the Horton Group. So thank you very much to Mike and Beth. And I will mention also that we've got a very active health insurance committee at a staff level. That's a cross-functional, cross-department team of town employees that come together to talk about plan level and design issues, the things that are working well, things that the plan could be operating better on. So do just want to really briefly call out that that's been a really successful group that has been, that has been meeting for many, many years. So appreciate their involvement there as well. And I think that Mike and Beth may be planning on just saying a couple of words, so I'll invite them to come on up and join us here.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak to you, and thank you, Mayor, council members, city manager, for the long relationship you've had with Horton Group. And we very much appreciate that. We've had some very good news to talk about the past several years. Last very difficult year was right after the pandemic, as you might recall. But a lot of good things have happened for your group at a time when you're probably reading and hearing about a lot of bad things in healthcare and renewals of healthcare being in extremely high rates this year, even as high as fifty percent in some cases on smaller-sized groups. Your group being self-funded and some of the moves it's made over the past several years, as was discussed with your committee, has really helped you manage your program far better than some other groups could do. You had a lot more flexibility that you switched to several years ago when we switched to the UMR TPA, which allowed us to shop much better options, which ended up to the bottom line. So we're very proud to be part of that and be helpful in that area. You also had a great deal of generation shift over the past five years. Your group got younger. Younger doesn't always mean healthier, but in this case, it's worked very well for you. And that's something that's happened at a lot of organizations, but a little more so here. So, and it certainly meant a lot to how the plan performed. And again, all the things from the committee that contributions and their suggestions have been very helpful. Sorry, still any thunder from Beth here, but...
No.
And Beth's been very critical in the implementation of all these things and things. Let her speak. There are a roll.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure to work with the team as a whole at the town, but the insurance committee is wonderful as well. I think we see a lot of relationships at a town, city, village level, and you guys work very well together. It's clear you have good partnerships across all lines. They come together. They're open to new ideas. They're open to creative ideas. It's, I mean, pharmacy-wise, it's been wonderful for us to be able to leverage those contracts, to be able to do RFPs and take advantage of contract things that you wouldn't be able to do if you were carved in at this size with other carriers. So just one example of where the group's been willing and open to creative things that sometimes are some heavy lifting.
Just kind of a point, though, for the future. We still do see large claims. You still do have large claims on your plan, and that will exist. But they are getting more severe, and we should be aware of that for the future. They are getting more complex, more costly. Great life-saving efforts, great new innovations with new pharmacy, new gene therapy and cell therapy drugs coming out that are really kind of into millions of dollars, but they're covered by our plans for a good reason. The FDA approves it, and people need them. But these are the challenges that not just your plan, all plans in healthcare are facing, and I hope to find more solutions from our partners in other spaces on the pharmacy ticket to kind of help that category, because that is rising extremely high. So... But had to throw that little future look out there just to remember that. But thank you. Any questions, please?
I think I will. If I could just jump in real quickly before council asks questions. In terms of this year's renewal, we are asking for what I would consider a pretty modest premium increase of two-point-three percent. Council is aware that the cost of that monthly premium increase is borne by the employer for our employees that have single coverage, and then the monthly premium is shared when an employee has dependent coverage. We're making a very small change regarding the retiree plan, but from all intents and purposes, it won't really affect them, retirees, on a day-to-day basis. It's just a different carrier, but same coverages. And then I think all else generally remains the same.
Ms. Smith?
I just was curious as to the Medicare Advantage insurers, because I had read somewhere that some providers are anticipating a squeeze on their reimbursement rates, and so had scaled back on the number of providers that they were including in their network. Did you encounter any of that with the two carriers that are part of this plan now?
I'd say the whole Medicare area is under review. It got hit very hard with price increases, the carriers did, to some extremes. We've seen for some counties forty percent increases. We didn't see that here. In fact, we were able to negotiate a very attractive alternative. I don't want to say no. It's out there. It's, but it's different by each carrier, and it's also different, keep in mind, by individual versus a group. We have you in a group that's actually pulled with others through the Benestar Group that we work with for years, who also worked with both carriers. So the people involved, the servicing, the staff behind it will all stay the same. So it won't be a big change for your folks at all, because all the people stay the same. Basically, the carriers are going to be whoever follows Medicare, whoever accepts Medicare rates, will be part of this plan, just as was your previous plan. I know I'm not exactly answering your questions other than when you take a look at the pharmacy benefits that were improved last year, which put a cap on the out-of-pocket maximums on pharmacy for Medicare and Medicare Advantage plans. That was a tremendous benefit added for everybody that they might not realize because of the cost involved in pharmacy. And it's really kind of, it's kind of shown in pricing as a result of it, unfortunately.
And the Medicare Advantage does encapsulate Medicare Part B and the Part D drug plan, so...
Yeah, and a few other pieces. Yeah, the dental and the vision piece as well.
So they may not, anyone with that program doesn't have to maybe worry about a supplement?
No, this program is the supplement. So they purchase Part A, B, and then this operates as their supplements for both the medical and the pharmacy side of things.
Perfect.
And just to add to the network comment, it's a, any provider that accepts Medicare reimbursement is considered in network. So there really isn't a network to speak of. It's any provider that's willing to accept Medicare reimbursement. And at this point, we're not aware of any provider that is not. Now, there could be some that decide they don't want to take Medicare patients. I think that's very unusual, though, at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Thank you. It's always good to see you, and you've provided great services to the town over the years, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. Thanks, everybody.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That resolution is approved. We moved to new business. The first item's an ordinance establishing the time and place for a public hearing for the Uptown North Tax Increment Finance District Redevelopment Plan and Project Area.
Move approval?
Second.
Questions on this item?
So, this item is narrowly defined as an ordinance establishing a time and place for the public hearing. What's the breadth of discussion you would like to have on this? Is it really just about the time and place, or do you want to entertain conversation about the TIF itself?
I think this is just time and place. Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item nine is a resolution waiving the formal bidding process requirements and executing an agreement with Axon for the purchase of Axon's unlimited premium plan plus Fleet Three. Three interview room, AI ERA plan, and record standards, and authorizing an appropriate budget adjustment.
Move approval?
Second.
Again, this has to do with records management and things such as cameras, interview rooms, and that for the normal police department.
Thank you, Mayor. This is quite a robust report, 100 and some odd pages. I'm going to, with Mayor Council's permission, ask Chief Petrilli and Innovation and Technology Director Vasu Gadharaju to come forward. They've been working diligently on public safety technology needs over the last few months. This particular action item pertains specifically to the law enforcement department, so Chief will answer questions on how this applies to their operations, and Ms. Gadharaju will cover all the tech info. So I'm going to ask Mr. or Chief Petrilli to kind of introduce this project.
Great, and thank you, Ms. Reese, and thank you, Council, Mayor, for giving us a few moments to come up and speak a little bit about what this project entails and ultimately what the benefits become for not only the PD, but the community and the upgrades that we'll see in our ability to deliver public safety services. I'm not going to go over the entire council action report. I know that you've had time to look at that. There was an included executive summary as well. But what I do want to touch on is this suite of products through Axon that seamlessly integrate together and ultimately bring a lot of equipment that we use on a daily basis into the same ecosystem that will allow operational efficiencies and upgrades in several different areas. So some of those are some daily use things, like body worn cameras, our in-car camera systems, because we've got cameras that we wear on our bodies, we've got cameras in the cars, our interview rooms. That's an area that may not seem like a major, I guess, need, but our interview rooms are ones that get used repeatedly, and a lot of our equipment is reaching near end of life, where we're having some audio issues that need to be addressed, and this does that and also helps filter that information into a digital evidence management system, which Vasu will probably get into a little bit as well. But that digital evidence management system, our current, and if I don't do this justice, I'm sure that you will, but our current on-prem approach to data collection and data preservation, whether that's an interview that we do, that's an in-car camera video that's taken on the street, body worn camera video that we upload into evidence, we're housing all that here in a hard, we have the hardware to maintain that. And just the amount of technology that we've seen in public safety and the way that it continues to grow, we're at 100 terabytes of hard storage. I think I know what that means, but Vasu's going to kind of film, that's a lot, from what I understand. So, digital evidence management with Axon, we get to move to a cloud-based system that's got unlimited storage options, so it's going to grow with us as we continue to grow in the areas of technology. On top of that, a records management system. Everybody's aware of some of the records management pursuits and endeavors we've been involved with, with the county and the city of Bloomington. That actually gave us an opportunity to kind of evaluate our own approach to records management, and we've seen a benefit with Axon here. This is another product that they offer that allows us to custom build a records management system that fits our needs, our operational requirements, and does a lot of things from the records side as well. Everything from FOIA to redaction to NiBRA's reporting and CEGIS compliant, there's a lot of things built into this. And the best thing is we get to customize that over the 18 to 24 months of that build if this proposal is approved. And lastly, and not the least important by any means, is the training components that come with this. You know, training-wise, when we look at training, just doing some rough numbers, about 65% of the officers that we have now on the department have about four years or less on the job. When you look at how those officers are spread out over patrol shifts, about 80% of the officers that we have actually working patrol out there in a uniform, four years or less on the road. Very qualified officers, they do a very good job, they're very proficient, but we also know the best equalizer for lack of experience is aggressive training. So we have done a lot of upgrades in our approach to training over the last three and a half years that I've been chief, and this is going to do nothing but continue to upgrade our ability to deliver training to our folks, not only to fill that gap between experience and training, but also we have a lot of state mandates, and they keep accumulating. It seems like on a yearly basis, there's a different class that's required for officers, all well-intended, but somehow we have to find a way to implement that. We're up to about eight, nine weeks of block training that we do a year, and that's by training our own folks to be subject matter experts in different disciplines and delivering training both in-house and away from the PD. This set of training protocols that comes with Axon will allow us to do a lot more in-house training. So that's kind of an overview of some of the bigger benefits, I think, that come with this package. Vasu, if you wanted to touch on some.
Definitely, I think I will echo Chief Petrilli's comment about digital evidence, and Councilmember McCarthy, you're right, 100 terabytes is a lot, but I think for law enforcement, one of the fastest growing data type is video, and that really accumulates fast, and keeping up with that has been a challenge. So this unlimited digital evidence will be extremely handy for operations, but also from a maintenance perspective for us. On top of that, from an evidence management perspective, officers use a lot of USB keys right now, which on a grand scheme of things may not seem like a big deal, but as we look at security overall, that is a vector that we are watching carefully. So this will allow us to cut down on devices like that. When we are talking about bringing a host of devices under one vendor, it really allows us to hold that vendor accountable and have relationships to manage those pieces of equipment better. So that's all I would like to add.
And the only other, I guess, things that I'll add, a 10-year agreement, so we're able to do some effective budgeting into the future. We have been a customer of this vendor for a very long time, since the early 2000s, and a lot of our partner agencies or chiefs that I are kind of in my group of influence, you know, Decatur, Springfield, Bloomington has recently signed on with the full suite of Axon products. They've been a user of Evidence.com and some of the other features for a while. Most agencies seem to be very happy with the service that's delivered. On top of that, there's automatic equipment refreshes that happen during the course of that 10-year agreement, guaranteeing that we always have functional, operable, top-of-the-line equipment for our officers to use on a daily basis.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Ms. Smith?
In the packet, there was mention made of conversion to this particular package. You anticipate some ancillary cost savings, because it will eliminate the need for some of the systems that are in place now. And this is probably going to you as well as Mr. Yun. Would there be an attempt to try to track as cost or eliminated because we have this system so that we can have a better understanding of the true cost of it, in the sense that it's making us more efficient?
Yes, most definitely. I think there are some that we can readily point out, too, like redaction systems and things like that, but over time, I think there'll be more.
And then, after the Caliber system expires, is there any concern about compatibility with the records it has generated, and what will be the process going forward to ensure that we don't have to hold on to any vintage Caliber software in order to access the records that were generated in that system?
So I'll try to take a stab at this first and maybe if can add to it. So the Caliber, the records generated by Caliber will not all be migrated to the new system. There will be a portion of those that will be migrated, but the records in the Caliber system will be maintained, and those are county records, they are not town or normal records.
Oh, okay. And Chief Petrilli, you were mentioning that other players, Bloomington in particular, is looking at that. What is the advantage of us being on the same system as other police forces, our neighboring city, the county sheriff, the state? What does that provide for us?
Well, from a cooperation standpoint, it allows us to share data with these other agencies. We can pretty much customize any type of data that we want to share and who exactly we want to share that with. But I think some of the bigger benefits come in that we're able to custom build this to our specifications and what we need for everything from our records management to our evidence management. It really does give us more control in how we build that system to ensure that it's operationally effective for us.
And I'm aware that in some of the sensitive discussions with the county over the Caliber system, mention was made, as I understand it, of the importance of data records being able to be used in the court system. So how does this software facilitate records acceptable to court proceedings?
Yeah, so when we're sharing any type of records with the county, the grand scheme of things, the majority of information that we accumulate, a lot of that doesn't go anywhere else besides our own in-house use. But to your point, things like evidence that needs to be transmitted to the state's attorney's office, any type of interviews, anything that would be relevant to a case report, we have the, not interfaces, but the.
We have the option to share it with them.
Yeah, the option to share those with any other stakeholder or partner agencies that we need to give information to. So it will actually make that process more efficient, kind of like, as Vasu had alluded to, the USB keys and the way in which we get evidence to and from. Right now, not a very efficient process, and I can tell you that the state's attorney's office is elated to hear that we're even entertaining moving towards a system like this, because it will streamline.
And not necessarily secure either.
Probably not as secure as this, this will definitely be more secure, yes.
And then, final, a somewhat touchy issue, but in our sales tax sharing with the county, part of the, one of the buckets was for software to facilitate police. Do we anticipate the possibility at all of recouping any of the payments that we've made to help us with this cost?
That would be a question for another day. That's work in progress.
Had to put it on the table. Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks. Mrs. Smith stole my questions about records management, so I'll just utilize this time quickly to say that I had an opportunity to get a behind-the-scenes look at some of the PD operations recently, and boy, some of the capabilities, as well as some of the needs and opportunity for our department, I was quite impressed by, and I think that by all accounts, the action that we're taking tonight will really suit NPD well for the long term and ultimately suit our community well, keep our officers safe, keep our community safe, and I am glad to be doing this. Thanks.
Can I make a comment to that, too? Just the fact that you bring that up is a super important point, because this technology allows us to grow in that direction, that where the profession is going, right? The use of technology, as we know, continues to evolve every day. You're probably going to hear more discussions about drones as first responders, real-time crime centers, like a lot of these things, this technology will allow us to grow in the area that the profession is going, so valid point. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah, as long as, it's like we planned this, as long as we're on the technology piece here, I'd like to delve a little bit deeper. I too had an opportunity to visit with a behind-the-scenes look at the police department, which I found very interesting, and in particular, we got talking a bit about a system like this and the potential that it could have. I think I seem to recall them speaking about even some use of AI to help synthesize and process through perhaps evidence and other, you know, massive amounts of information that you have to go through. So, you know, I immediately saw this as a really good business case in terms of best use of time for officers. So has the vendor shared with you any expectations of how their time spent on, you know, behind the screen might be reduced and therefore get the officer back out on the street? Can you speak to any of that and how that AI or future technology will help in that?
Sure. Yeah, I think some of the technology, and I'll start, and then I think this would be a good one for you to jump in on. Some of the technology, the Draft One software that they use for reporting, my understanding of that is it's cutting down the amount of time officers have to spend on a report. It's not completing the report, right? There's still, it's still inherent on the officer that's narrating that report to, you know, be factual, to double-check the report, to make sure that things going in the report are factual. But in discussions with Vasu, I think the whole approach to AI is that we are going to train our staff on the front end of what the pitfalls could be of an AI, anything AI as we move forward, but hoping that that training then allows us to implement systems that make us more efficient. But the one that I can speak to the most would be the Draft One software, and a lot of agencies have had some really good success with that on helping them cut down the amount of time officers are spending doing reports.
And is that Draft One a component of this suite of products?
Yes, yes. So just to add on to that, sorry, Draft One is a tool, the name of the AI tool that they use to take audio recording from various devices that the officers wear to then transcribe. And like anything AI, I think Axon has put in some guardrails to make sure to protect the information. Of course, there is bracketed information where officers have to go through the highlighted aspects of it and make sure that they fill in the appropriate information, but there are also additional places where additional AI sentences are introduced, unless they're removed, they cannot submit the report. So kind of make sure that there are a couple of double checks before AI reports are submitted. It allows officers to completely make sure that it is their report.
Right, right. So, I mean, I think it could be a fascinating business case. Obviously, it's got, you know, great law enforcement attributes to it, but to that end, I would think that it would be very interesting and useful as we progress over this multi-year contract to keep track of the efficiencies gained.
Yes.
So I think we need to start that now and, you know, get a baseline, and then as you move forward and implement and bring in these various tools, show how it is a benefit to the safety of our community, the time allocation of where the police officers' times are spent and so forth. So that would be my one request.
Further on this? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberg?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That resolution is approved. We moved to the final item on new business, which is a presentation on the status of Vision 2050 Sustainable Plan.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Ms. Davison has joined us, and you got a little sneak peek earlier in terms of our Bird City, Illinois recognition, so that's exciting. The town staff has been working for the, basically, all this calendar year on implementation of the Sustainability Plan, so I've asked Ms. Gadharaju to give council an update. Sorry, Ms. Davison.
Oh, she can, if you'd like.
Wrong department head.
I'm back, Vasu.
Ms. Davison to give us an update on where we're at with implementation of the Sustainability Plan and what the horizon looks like for that plan, so thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. I had to log in there. Hopefully, this will work. So, yeah, this will come up on the screen in a second. I'm really happy to be up here on behalf of the Sustainability Committee. We've been doing some great work, and we're really excited to tell you all about it tonight, especially on the heels of the Bird City, Illinois designation. I'm just going to do a very brief walk back in time to 2010. As you recall, back in 2010, the council adopted the Vision 2035 Plan, which was the first of its kind to be a sustainability plan. So that's 15 years ago. It launched a bunch of exciting initiatives, including what you see on the screen here. So think back, the 2035 Plan, since we implemented that in 2010, we've had the bicycle-friendly community designation for the first time in 2014. We instituted curbside recycling for residential, very exciting. A lot of habitat restoration at some of our parks, including Hidden Creek and Underwood, and then we've extended the Constitution Trail multiple times. So lots of good things happening since that plan was adopted. That plan itself was a bit outward-looking. We had many citizens involved, and there were many goals in the plan, some of which were town-focused and some of which were more community-wide, which brings us to the next version of the plan, Vision 2050, which y'all saw last year in the fall and approved. We had many citizens involved and there were many goals in the plan, some of which were town-focused and some of which were more community-wide. Which brings us to the next version of the plan, Vision 2050, which y'all saw last year in the fall and approved. Again, tasked with turning this into a sustainability plan, the mayor pulled together a group of 19 citizens with diverse backgrounds and an outside consultant to come up with a refreshed sustainability plan, this time a little bit more tailored to our own operations, things that we could do as the town. This plan was based on extensive outreach and research into the facts. So as we reported to you last year, we dug into all sorts of data that pertains specifically to Normal. And then we also did some really high-quality surveying, including a scientific survey through our vendors and city. As you may recall, as a part of that survey, 84% of people surveyed were supportive or highly supportive of the town taking steps to invest in sustainable practices. They were very excited about that. And there was a lot of excitement around planting trees as a key sustainability initiative and also quite a bit of excitement around alternative transportation like bicycle and pedestrian-friendly roadway treatments. So that's what you saw last year. And from that, the committee came up with a plan grounded in these seven goals. I won't read them verbatim, but I'll summarize. The first was to create a sustainability office at the town within our operations. The second was to look at enhancing alternative transportation. The third focused on what you think of as, you know, the natural environment. So looking at biodiversity, planting trees, expanding natural habitats. The fourth was creating more affordable, energy-efficient housing stock. Number five was green infrastructure focusing on water, whether that's drinkable water, surface water, wastewater treatment, stormwater, all the forms of water we need to care about. Number six is looking at all sorts of energy efficiency and renewables. And seven focuses on waste, whether that's through waste management, whether that's recycling, composting, or just innovative ways to reduce our waste. So that brings us to today and the Staff Sustainability Committee. So the Town Administration Department assembled an interdepartmental staff team to serve the role of a sustainability office as called for in the plan. This committee is filled with people from key operational departments. And everybody on the committee is somebody with deep expertise in their field and some level of authority to actually, you know, call for action and then follow it through. We have on this department, folks from all of these areas. I won't read through it, but it's a lot of departments you would expect. It's not all the departments, but this is where we're starting. And this group is, we've been meeting since February on a monthly basis. The purpose of the group is to look at the goals set forth in the plan that's adopted and figure out what specific actions can different departments take to meet those goals. And, you know, everybody's bringing their own expertise to the table. So we were able to, we've had, at every meeting, we've had different departments report out and lead the meeting. So it's a very distributed leadership model, which is nice. It's no one person running this whole show. So at every meeting, a different department has reported on what kinds of new initiatives they might do that would go towards advancing the goals in this plan. And you can't just come up with ideas. You also have to talk about how are you going to track your success? How will you measure it? What are your baseline data? And as a group, we've really had great discussions around how this should all work. And I think we're all learning from each other, too, which is really exciting. A lot of, as the slide mentions, it's a lot of cross collaborative discussion. We really are learning a lot about what we are each doing respectively in our own departments, and we all have good ideas for each other as well. So here we get to the meat of the presentation is what are we recommending? I'm just going to have a slide or two for each of the team members, and it will cover what the goals are moving forward and what are some recent wins, because we really need to take a moment to actually appreciate what we are accomplishing already. These departments are in alphabetical order, no sort of prioritizing. So we'll start with cultural arts. Looking ahead for cultural arts, the goal that we're really looking at in the coming months is to reduce single-use water bottles. It's very specific, but it's also a very high-profile item that we have at a lot of our events, especially when you think about all the events in Uptown and at Conny Link, most of them are happening in the hottest part of the year. Oh, sorry. Well, we should all be drinking the award-winning water provided by our water department. So, but all of our, so many of our events are happening in the hottest time of the year, right? And so, and people need to drink water. That's super important. But if we can do more to promote the Water Monster, which if you've ever seen it, is really easy to use. And then also, a very simple action item, Facilities is going to install a water bottle filling station at Conny Link. So we've got, you know, hundreds of youth that go through Conny Link every summer, and they're hot. It's really, really hot. And so if they can fill up their water bottles at a filling station, that will really, it'll be really great for them. It's great modeling behavior. Things they've already done are things that you've heard about. They've replaced the projector at the Normal Theater with a laser projector, which is using a lot less energy. It's great. They've switched out to LED lamps at Conny Link. They're using more rechargeable batteries. You know, it all sounds incremental, but it is all having a real effect. And it's also visible to the public, which is really nice. Inspections and facilities, you know, we're very fortunate to have a highly qualified staff here, very professional, a lot of certifications and credentials. So the model that they operate under is very sustainable to start with. So we thought we could take that expertise and really push out that information to staff in-house. Because although we are all doing fairly sustainable things during the workday, we don't necessarily talk about it. We don't celebrate our wins and we don't talk about what we might be, where we might be missing the mark. One of those things is the water bottle filling stations that we have throughout the town at all of our facilities. We went and added up how many bottles we've avoided since we've installed them. It's more than 370,000 bottles. And I am happy to report that our best hydrated department is the police department. They drink the most water. 170,000 bottles of water, so that they have avoided by using the fillers. Of course, facilities will continue to make energy efficiency upgrades. Every time there's an opportunity, they're taking it. And then they're always looking at ways to reduce hazardous products, especially like with cleaning and remodeling projects. Recent wins for facilities, really can't say enough about their recertification that they just learned about in the last few days through the SIMS program, which I had to write this down. It is the Cleaning Industry Management Standard for green buildings. So this is a third-party certification, and it's really the best of the best. And not many municipalities, maybe only one other one, have this level of certification. And this ensures that they are following the most sustainable practices on the market today, which is really fantastic for us. They've also just finished a major energy efficiency project over, or multiple, projects at the Children's Discovery Museum. And of course, they've, at this point, updated all the lighting in the parking decks to LED. So that's a great benefit for us from an energy perspective. The library is, they're looking at a really exciting goal. Starting next year, they're going to apply for the Sustainable Libraries Initiative. So another third-party certification. But these are the certifications that mean something, because someone is coming in and telling you, you have to do this, and by the way, did you do it? And so you, there's no hiding the ball. This will take two years. It'll take quite a bit of intergovernmental or interdepartmental cooperation, because they'll need data and certain support from the rest of us, which is great, because we've all, a lot of us have gone through certifications. And this is going to help the library, you know, focus on their sustainability goals. Key points are things you would assume, like energy efficiency and recycling and water use. But it's, it'll be really, the library will be in good company when they achieve the certification. Recent wins for the library in their rehab project, they were able to take advantage of like upgraded, more efficient lighting and different kinds of mechanicals. They expanded their pollinator plantings along the north side of the building, so there's beautiful planter beds out there. So that's, it all kind of goes along with the mayor's monarch pledge as well. They have their seed catalog back in action, where you can swap out garden and native seeds for free, which is just really fun. And of course, the library is basically one big recycling operation, because if you check it out, you must bring it back. Parks and Recreation, that's one of our highest visibility areas in sustainability. Clearly, all the land that they're managing and that people are enjoying all the time, it's where you get a lot of highly visible, sustainable upgrades. So their goals coming up in the next year are to expand tree planting, which goes along with one of the highest goals in the plan. They're hoping to plant two trees for every one that's removed. They're also looking at maintaining trees differently, because we can't just plant more trees. We have to maintain the ones we have, the mature trees we have. So they'll be looking at trying to prune up to like 15 or 20% of all of our tree inventory every year, which is really great. It sounds, I don't know if it sounds exciting, but it's really important. If you can maintain the health of the trees, you don't have to plant as many. They're also looking at continuing to convert annual planted beds to perennials. This is then going to swap out to native plants, much better for pollinators, and also a lot less staff labor so once they get established. So that's fantastic and beautiful. They're also looking at expanding some natural habitat areas in the parks. And they're going to expand their battery-powered equipment as equipment needs to turn over. They've had success recently with rechargeable battery-powered equipment, and they will be getting more of that as needed. So that's been a good development. Recent wins for parks, if you haven't seen the water feature and all the native plantings next to the Conny Link, you really should go. It's absolutely beautiful. I think we're, it's close to an acre. It's just, it's really stunning. It's great for pollinators, it's great for birds, and really great for people. It is a very, very calm and relaxing place. It's absolutely delightful. They've also done this amazing pollinator planting at Normandy Village. Like, I think everyone should have their family photos taken there. It's really, really beautiful. And we have a recent partnership with Unit Five to address some concerns they had about all the plastic water bottles they're using at their cross-country events, especially with the fall cross-country season being hotter than usual. There's a lot of kids that need water. So I think we took a Water Monster out there and helped them with recycling as well, which is a great partnership. Planning and zoning, we'll be looking at renewing our bike-friendly community status. We'll work on that next year, hope to get to silver. We'll be collaborating with other departments on Bird City activities. Recent wins for us include the application for Bird City, Illinois. We also worked closely with Ride Illinois to do a bicycle training program here, which is really huge. It's very hard to get volunteers to give up two days of their life to be trained to be high-level bike educators, but we did it here. And so now we have Tessa Ferraro on staff, who's a certified instructor, along with four people in the, who live in Bloomington Normal, who can help us with all of our bicycle education activities, which is great, because we work with a lot of kids. We also helped Illinois State University with their bike-friendly university application. For Public Works in Engineering, some of the goals they're setting are reducing vehicle idling. So our fleet is out and about all the time. If we can cut our idling by 30%, that'll be very good for the vehicles, very good for fuel usage, and very good for air quality. So that's something that is achievable with technology. We have ways to track it in real time. So if a vehicle is idling beyond a predetermined amount, and it seems, it's like an unusual amount, we can actually reach out to that driver and make sure nothing's wrong, or, you know, just see what's going on. We're also looking at transitioning up to 20% of the fleet to electric or hybrid by 2030, reducing road salt usage, which is, will be very beneficial for water quality, but also for people's landscaping, people's cars, et cetera. We need to salt to the degree that, to keep roads safe and drivable, but there's also ways to do it with more precision. So Ryan's team is investigating that, and there's a lot of exciting possibilities there. And of course, they'll keep implementing the bike and pedestrian master plan. Recent wins in Public Works, you heard recently about the detention basin remediation over at Eagles Landing. They've done something similar at Park West. When we fix up those banks with native plants, we have better water quality and less erosion, and better for pollinators. So these are the win-win-win projects that we've already been undertaking. They're very effective. They've also already been to training on road salt usage. And of course, you're aware of the amazing bike ped projects that have been finished in the last couple of years. The Gregory Street Trail is just fantastic. And then all the improvements on Adelaide by the elementary school are benefiting walkers every day. And we wrap with water. John's team will keep doing all the water quality monitoring that they're required to do, but they're also going to continue working with the Mohammed Aquifer Group to continue protecting that resource, as it is a sole source for many communities. John's team is also going to be installing signage in rural areas where we have wells. A lot of people don't know that we have wells outside of town, and the people that are out there don't know that their activities could affect our water quality if they do certain things near them. So you can put up signs that kind of explain what's going on and encourage people to be respectful. This is a water, a water area for the community. And some recent wins in water, certainly the state law that recently passed to protect the Mohammed Aquifer has to be number one. That was, that's a big deal for us, to protect the Aquifer from, I believe it was CO2 storage. And then his team is always upgrading equipment with more efficient versions as needed. So that's already been happening, but that's, that will continue. Next steps for this group, we will continue to meet. We will continue to track data. This next year, I imagine, we'll iron out the wrinkles in how we collect data. We might decide some data aren't as helpful as others, or maybe there are different formats for it. That's where I and T can come in and help us with technologies that may help us with how we track things, and working with communications on how we communicate what we're doing and what progress we're making. What you'll end up seeing is you'll see this in our annual report. So it's very transparent, so that the public and you will have full information as to what this committee is accomplishing. And I think with that, I will point out that this will also offer more opportunities for us to work with partners, most of whom we already work closely with, Ecology Action Center, Illinois State's Sustainability Office, the Bird Alliance. There's many, there are many groups that are very helpful in these regards, so they will be valuable partners moving forward. And I think that's, I think that's what we're doing. Yep. Happy to get you up to speed.
Questions for Mercy? Go ahead, Mr. McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. Wow, that's a lot since 2010. That's pretty amazing. Kudos to our in-house team. And I'm very excited and grateful that we have a very dedicated group of citizens that are engaged and have stayed engaged to help keep us moving forward, hold our feet to the fire, however you want to, whatever we need to continue to move forward and work with the town staff to make meaningful progress. So thank you. That's, talking to a few counterparts from other communities, the question was, now, how did you get that to happen? So it's, we're very fortunate to have such engaged citizens. And I don't have any questions just from that 2010 and reporting being involved with that partly. How far our efforts have come from, I remember that first one, just trying to define what sustainability was for our community and where the heck do we start? And what does that look like to a cross-functional team defining specific priorities and functional areas and assigning metrics in a dashboard to be able to show our progress and the value of our efforts here in some kind of an annual, meaningful way is nothing short of amazing in a short period of time. So I just want to call all that out. I'm just tickled with the progress that we've done. So thank you, everybody who's been involved.
I think I would echo that, the fact that quite a bit has been accomplished. And as you said, we need to tell our story so people understand what we're doing. But what impresses me is the breadth of participation within the organization and the dedication of the people that are doing that to really see that these things get done and noted that you're not going to rest on your laurels, you're going to continue to do this work for the plan. So that's very, very impressive, the amount of stuff that we've gotten done. And that it's really organizationally spread, I think is very, very important. Mr. Robarge?
So thank you very much for your presentation, first of all. Very impressive, the amount of work that's been done in the last 15 years since this has been implemented. On more, you're talking about wins that have occurred recently, did notice that within the last couple of months at Maxwell Park, there was a water fountain that needed to be replaced. And when it was replaced, it was replaced with a upgrade, has a water bottle filler on it, which, as you said, it's a little thing that's done, but ultimately, the amount of people that will now be refilling these water bottles there, instead of bringing one from home and throwing it away in the garbage there, is appreciable. And just wanted to highlight that as such a small step that we took that could have some ripple effects down the road. So thank you very much for that.
Ms. Smith?
I just want to commend the town for when we found ourselves not able to establish a dedicated staff position for sustainability, that the response instead of abandoning the concept was to create this committee and involve a number of departments in the planning so that the work could still continue. And I applaud the town administration for making that happen and all the employees that gave their time. I didn't realize that the curbside recycling is only 15 years old. I didn't realize that the curbside recycling is only fifteen years old, and I know, um, I have a can at the house, and it's the one that gets the most filled. Um, and we usually get away with, uh, one garbage bag for the week, uh, of what, what goes to the landfill. But I, I would love to see consideration given to curbside composting. Um, I love the leaves, but, but just an added thing, because that's some other items being taken away from the trash. But also, uh, we do have a number of hotels in town, and when I travel, I, I look for whether or not there's recyclables that I can use, uh, when I'm traveling. If not, I have a separate bag for the recyclables I take home, and I, I, I would love, love to see that opportunity given to people that are traveling to also honor the, the earth with recycling.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. Um, so two ideas, um, only one question, one idea. The idea is, um, perhaps we should put the, uh, ideas to use here and refrain from placing water bottles at our desk here. I'm feeling rather sheepish that I'm drinking out of this water bottle right now. So if you would like to install a station here, or we just use the tap water, I'd be all for that. So that's my idea. The second is a question, and that is, um, I think we've got a few people, at least here, who were part of the, um, creation of this plan. This plan that we're reviewing today is really a year old, correct? Okay. Building upon the one from 2010. So how, how often do you circle back with that group as a checkpoint to see if it's fulfilling their envision?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, um, it's rare that a group sticks with us after the adoption, so there was no precedent for me. But, um, I've sent them a quarterly email since then, so I sent one maybe in January and one later in like April, maybe, and then this, tonight is replacing the third one. So, uh, I will send another one at the end of the year. And then when the plant, the, uh, annual report comes out, I'll send that as well. I think I sent them the one last year, too. We did one last December that was just the, to set the baseline. But yeah, I've been in touch, you know, off and on. Quarterly was the goal.
And they have an opportunity to respond and continue to provide input if they wish?
Sure. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Thank you, Mercy. That's a very insightful report. Didn't realize we'd done all that.
I know, and really, I'm up here representing a whole bunch of people, so everyone else gets the credit.
So, uh, excuse me for a moment. We, uh, have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of personnel. Uh, before that, we do have two public commenters tonight, and, uh, we'll, uh, do that. The first is Abdullah Alqada, I think. Hopefully I didn't butcher that too badly. Just to go over, um, our rules for public comment. Come forward. Sure. To go over our rules for public comment, um, we ask you to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
By the way, this room is way nicer than the city council in Springfield. All right, good evening, y'all. Uh, my name is Abdullah, and I'm a nursing student at Minnetonite College of Nursing. I was actually, I was born in New York, and I decided to come to Illinois to pursue nursing. Actually, as the event of October seventh tomorrow, as you guys know, uh, last year, I wanted to go to Israel, uh, to find peace between the Israelis and Palestinians, as I got accepted into Arava Institute, very good, uh, institution. Uh, but because of the conflict, people told me, "Why don't you pursue nursing?" And I said, "Sure." And then I got accepted at Minnetonite. It's a very good school, very good university, and I have met great instructors, who I, I learned a lot from them. And I was supposed to graduate over the summer this year, and unfortunately, I had to deal with a bully instructor who, I think, violated the student handbook, and I wasn't getting the support I need as a student. I had A in clinical, B in the class. I was also on the dean's list in the spring of 2025, and I'm always respectful to the student handbook and guidelines. And unfortunately, I felt like I'm kind of singled out, I don't know, discriminated against because I'm different. I'm a type of guy, I like to speak up. I like to advocate for students. I like to work with, with anybody to find solutions to the students. Unfortunately, the new interim dean we got in the school over the summer, um, she, she's not really cooperative, uh, to the point where I did a great appeal, uh, because I followed up with the provost. The provost said, "Abdullah, the only choice you have is the great appeal." I did the great appeal with good faith. I submitted all the documents, all needed, and unfortunately, I got retaliated against, uh, from the dean, where to the point they convinced me to retake the class again. And my family told me, "Abdullah, don't take it again. These people treated you po- poorly, even though you're a good student." My, the, the care I provide to my patients speaks volume, and I've been nothing but respectful to ISU policies, MCN handbook. A lot of instructors can speak on my behalf, and I was shocked to the point where the interim dean, the new one, she's been silencing faculty members to advocate on my behalf. Long story short, I retook the class in good faith, just two weeks into the semester, they failed me in clinical again. And the reason they failed me for, it's just unbelievable, false allegations to the point, per the student handbook, the, the clinical instructor never addressed any of these concerns with me in person, never spoke with me, they just, boom, they gave me the clinical instruct, uh, the clinical suspension and the dismissal from the program. And I have to, to reply to these, um, things. And it's funny, I, I feel like in this two months, the last two months, I feel like I'm doing legal studies, because I've been reading the student handbook, I'm trying to do the best I can, and all I have to do now is to find people to advocate for me. And all my colleagues have graduated over August this year, and I've been having mental anguish. Thank God I have a tech job right now, I work at a hospital, I'm doing fine, but the issue I have is that I reached a dead end, to the point where like, every, like, even though you try to explain yourself, you try to advocate about yourself, it's not enough. And I love this town. I'm from Chicago area, first time I come to Normal.
Abdullah, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up. You've exceeded your time.
Thank you. And, uh, in, in, in conclusion, I want people to advocate for me. I think this is a serious matter for the town of Normal, uh, and I think I'm a peacemaker, and I'm trying to find a solution to this, and I did, I need advocacy, and I hope that students who probably face things like this to reach out to me. And I wanna give my number, three one two six three two three eight five five. Thank you all for listening, and I appreciate it.
Good evening, Council. I'm Brayden Fogerston. That's B-R-A-D-E-N-F-O-G-E-R-S-O-N. Um, I'm here tonight because of my love for grilling. Young America allows grills except for charcoal. Um, that's agreed to in their leasing contracts. Um, and this issue that occurred this winter, um, has been on my mind since I've been over there for about eight months now. Um, I was messaged in January via email that, uh, municipal code had different policy than Young America, where, um, no outdoor cooking equipment for any building was allowed with, uh, for any building with more than three uni, or three or more units, or if it was not a one or two-family dwelling. Um, normal ordinance, normal ordinances are not quite as easy to find, um, and that email only specifically said a municipal code, so I'm not sure if they were reading off of Normal's code, but, um, Young America's interpreti, interpretation is exclusionary toward, uh, thousands of apartment dwellers in Normal, um, thousands more of students that are in off-campus housing, and thousands of people like myself, who is now a former student of ISU that still lives in Normal and loves to live in Normal. We have a housing crisis right now. Um, I don't foresee ever getting a house in my lifetime, at least not anytime soon. Housing crisis is not getting solved anytime soon, even though there's certainly efforts, both for the town of Normal and, uh, the rest of the country, um, to try and solve it. How is it right for the current renter population, a lot of people my age and, and the like, um, to be told that they can't do something, uh, grilling, that people older than us have the right to do, because they live in single-family homes, because they own property that we don't? Um, there's been no enforcement so far by the town of Normal Police, who has all that water, um, but, uh, there's been fines issued, you know, if there's fines issued for violators, something that the email said would happen if Young America had to enforce it. Um, and that would be a problem for someone like myself, who does not have the money to pay for that. Um, if the pump, if the apartment company agrees that I can, um, you know, have a grill as long as it's not charcoal, and I pay for renters' insurance, um, why is it fair that the town can say no? And, uh, lastly, I would just say that I would like to see these rules adjusted to correct some of these issues while not hurting the fire safety concerns that I would presume were the reasons that these rules were put in place.
Are there council comments and concerns? I'm surprised.
Last time, um, the Free Veterans Fair is on October eleventh from ten to two at Bloomington Public Library, and it's an opportunity for veterans to learn about the resources available to them and make sure they are, uh, gaining access to the services they so richly deserve. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of personnel.
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.